Okay, you're all set.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April 16th Lewiston City Council Budget Workshop and Special Meeting. So to begin with, probably we should do a roll call, or I'll have every council starting with Ward 1, just a quick introduction for the public's sake.
Sophia Khalid, Ward 1.
Zach Pen Gil, Ward 2.
Alicia Ray, Ward 3.
Michael Joy, Ward 4.
Luke Jensen, Ward 5.
Lee Clement, Ward 6.
Okay, thank you. And Councilor Stephanie Jelinez from Ward 7 will be joining us shortly. And my name is Mark Karen. I'm the mayor. And we'll move to a COVID update by either our city administrator or deputy city administrator. So take it away.
I'll start, and then I can turn it over to Dennis. I'll just briefly update everybody that we continue to make good progress on the shelter at the Armory. The tentative opening date is now next Wednesday. They have found someone to operate the shelter with experience dealing with difficult individuals with real challenges. So that position's now been filled, and all of the planning seems to be coming into place with some odds and ends of the logistics of the situation still to be worked out. I have, we have finalized an agreement with CCI that would allow them to use the shelter. That's been reviewed by our city attorney, and so that's all set to go. And we'll be finalizing that in the morning and getting that out so that they'll be set to go on that side. So I think everything there has come together much better than we had ever anticipated, given how complicated this kind of an operation is. And I anticipate we'll actually be up and running next week.
And if you could add, it's my understanding that at this point, there's no cost to the city that this is going to be funded through.
That's correct.
Main state housing.
It's all being funded through main state housing, community concepts, is submitting a budget to them. Either they either did it late this afternoon, or they'll do it early tomorrow. Main State will be picking up all of the costs associated with it all the way through the whole process.
Okay. Do any councilors have any questions of the city administrator? Councilor Ray?
I apologize. I haven't had time to fully parse through the governor's announcement on evictions today. Does any city staff have a synopsis of that, and can we share that with the public as well?
Basically, there is some information. We can certainly make sure that everybody has it. The governor has basically stayed the process of evicting people for a, as I recall, taken the eviction process from 30 days to 60 days. I skimmed the announcement today, didn't look at it real carefully. So Dennis, I don't know, did you look at it more carefully than I did for the details there, or Mark?
I did not.
So I did, but it was pretty lengthy. So did you have a specific question to it? It kind of focused more on the court order and kind of aligning with that, I thought.
Okay, I just think as soon as we can put out a post about it on Facebook and through our email messaging system, I know that that's on a lot of constituents' minds. So just making sure the city understands that order and has the resources to provide it.
Okay, and I'll quickly, and then I'll turn it over to you, Dennis. But so I got an email today that the state of Maine is doing some, a rent release program to kind of get fund until hopefully our CDVG program kicks in. It's a one-time $500 payment that tenants can apply for, for rent-specific. Payment would be made directly to the landlord. So that I can share that with the city council, and I would assume Dottie got that today, and we'll be posting that as well. Okay, all right. Any other questions specific to the shelter for the city administrator? Okay, I'll turn it over to Deputy City Administrator Dennis Dote.
Yeah, just, I don't have a lot to add based on what's already been shared and with our update on Tuesday. But I would just add that with the extension of the governor's, you know, emergency order to May 15th, that we'll just be reviewing our programs and closure list, and obviously reevaluating those under that new order and announcing any adjustments to that, I would say, coming in the coming week or so, we'll be updating that. I think that's all we have at this point.
Okay, thank you. And I see the Councilor Jelinez is now with us. Welcome. And I'll entertain a motion to enter into an executive session.
I make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Khalid, seconded by Councilor Jensen. All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, yeah. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Counselor from Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
And Ward 7?
Yes.
Motion passed, my vote is 7 to 0. Thank you.
All right, we'll be headed into executive session. I expect we'll return within 30 minutes or so.
Yes, and just as a reminder for everyone, those of you who are going into the executive session, you will leave this meeting, there was a link sent out just a little bit ago to your email to enter into the executive session meeting, enter into that. When that session's over, we'll re-enter into this one.
Okay, thank you.
Just a reminder to members of the public who are joining us this evening for the Lewiston City Council Budget Workshop. The city council is presently in executive session and should be emerging shortly, and we will then begin the budget workshop tonight. Thank you.
Looks like the right place.
So Kathy, how many times did you announce that we would be back in a minute?
Just a couple because we had the same number of attendees hanging on for the whole time basically.
Okay, good.
So once everybody's here, we're in the open meeting, right? Because I see it says we're recording, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just glad it's not me this time.
I feel you Stephanie, when I was last one in, feels like such a rush.
I clicked like three different links, it was just so much.
Yeah, there's a lot of content.
Okay folks, we're in open meeting right now and active and we'll move to the general budget adjustments and discussion. Ed, do you want to lead this?
Well, I'm going to just start very briefly and Well, I'm going to just start very briefly and turn it over to Heather who will walk us through. We have put together a number of scenarios that the council can consider, including the last one, which is kind of my initial recommendations. I will again emphasize that this is a work in progress, that a lot of these numbers may be subject to some adjustment and change going forward over the next couple of weeks as we get more information. Because things seem to be changing pretty rapidly and we're still trying to get a handle on some areas. With that, I'll turn it over to Heather to walk through the different scenarios and then we can have some discussion.
All right, thank you, Heather.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Administrator. I think I'll take advantage of kind of recapping where we started and kind of reviewing your scenario recommendations, Mr. Mayor, that you had sent out. Dennis, will you be sharing the file?
You're mute.
Yes, give me one second, I'm pulling it up.
Okay, thank you. Well, while he's sharing the file, I might remind the City Council that when the budget document was first printed, the current FY20, the current year tax rate was $28.91. The recommended tax rate at publication was $30.66 with a $1.75 increase or about a little over a 6% increase. Both the City and the School Department did some initial budget reductions, reducing the $30.66 tax rate down to $29.88 or a $0.97 tax rate or 3.4. Then COVID, the coronavirus struck. We are now, as we talked about Tuesday night, anticipating a 12% decrease in revenue, which I'm valuing to be about $1,631,300. Initially, we had a little over $4 million recommended for capital purchases and one-time repairs from fund balance. Based upon the sheet presented and emailed, and now that the Deputy City Administrator also has it on screen, you will see that we're splitting that $3 million now. Tuesday, we talked about deferring some of the capital. So we are recommending a $1.5 million capital appropriation. Fund balance started at 13.08%, that brings us down to 11.96%. And I'm looking at making up the revenues that we are losing due to the economic result of the pandemic with the other portion of fund balance. So I'm looking at funding $1,650,000 from operations to balance our budget, assist with balancing our budget this year. That will require a waiver of the fund balance policy because the policy only allows us to use it for capital and one-time expenditures. That will bring the fund balance down to 10.75%, still well above the sweet spot that the council traditionally uses for fund balance coverage. I think at this juncture, I would not recommend going below that amount because we are still uncertain whether our revenue projections that we are estimating are even in the ballpark. So that will provide a cushion if we need it for unanticipated operations and depending on how things go and when the economy starts turning around or how quickly it turns around. So, Mr. Mayor and the council had sent around an email kind of talking about various scenarios. And I am working the scenarios in reverse order of what that email had requested. And the first scenario, or the scenario three, kind of talked about what would be kind of a City Administrator recommendation budget, looking at all accounts and seeing how that would go. So, this kind of provides a summary of what I was looking at. So you will see, we first have reductions in salaries through salary differentials. That means through attrition, somebody that has had a longevity with the city is now being replaced with somebody that's probably more towards the entry-level salary. That also includes a slight reduction in attorney fees and the audit fees. Those two combinations represent a $97,000 reduction. We have citywide a reduction in overtime of $24,000. We are looking at a reduction in temporary wages of $31,000 and that includes the $7,500 that the General Fund provides to the Recreation Activity Funds for aquatics operations. We did that transfer, I think about three years ago to kind of help balance the loss of the aquatics program against all of the other rec activity programs. Given the uncertainty of when we will be able to reinstate rec activity funds, our activities, as well as the pool, we feel comfortable that at least at this point, it won't be when the season normally kicks off. So we will retain that $7,500 for temporary wages. With those first three adjustments, there is a fringe benefit component. So we have a $33,000 fringe benefit savings from those line items. Looking at citywide utilities and telephone bills, we have about a $4,000 savings. Reductions in repairs, this is repairs citywide for equipment, vehicles, buildings, grounds, and so forth. That has a $73,000 value. Training and travel for citywide staff includes a $21,000 reduction. And then we have a wide variety of smaller, other contractual items making up $61,000. Moving on to supplies, we have just shy of a $6,000 savings there. Gas and tires, again, represents just shy of $6,000. Reductions in clothing come to $2,800. Tools and other supplies has a value of $23,000. The Public Works Director offered a reduction of tarring for $10,000. We anticipate an increase in general assistance services, so we are adding that back to the budget. This amount here ties to what we anticipate the 70% reimbursement from the state to be. So we are adding back just shy of $140,000 there. Miscellaneous fixed charges include $3,500. Joint Agency reductions are at $195,000 and that is comprised of three joint agencies. The 911 Committee is looking at having a meeting tomorrow morning to discuss this in particular, but they have a combination of reductions to their budget as well as using a bit more fund balance than they had anticipated. The airport operations provided a reduction that makes his initial presentation of the FY21 budget was below their current year ask. This will reduce that further and offered about $17,000. The balance of this adjustment relates to the Transit Committee's additional funds with the stimulus package. This is approximately right around half of what we could take. We are deliberately leaving that as the 50% reduction, recognizing at some point in the near future in the FY22 budget, we would have a significant cliff that we would need to make up and that would represent almost a $300,000 to $400,000 increase in the budget right off the bat. So, we are looking at phasing that portion in. And then initially, when the budget document was produced, we were discussing a 15% water rate increase that has been reduced to a 10% as we're discussing now. So that ends up impacting the hydrant rental fees or the water supply to provide fire protection of $125,000. In totality, that represents budget adjustments to 203 different line items and totaling $580,197, which brings the city portion of the tax rate down to $17.22 or a 55 cent increase. Moving to the second page, scenario two was requested, what it would take to get to a $28.99 tax rate increase, assuming that the School Department would be reviewing their particular budget adjustments as well. So, making that assumption, I needed to pick up just shy of $1 million in order to do that. So you will see in this particular scenario, you have a reduction in salaries of $788,000, reduction in temporary wages of $7,000, fringe benefits associated with that of $178,000, reductions to contractual items of just shy of $12,000, reductions to supplies of $9,400 and a little $80 adjustment for fixed charges. That represents adjustments to 612 accounts, primarily because of all the fringe benefits, totaling $995,661. At this point, that would eliminate 12 vacant positions. It reduces Public Works temporary wages further. It would eliminate two filled positions and eliminate two to-be-determined positions. It would reduce the city's tax rate, or portion of the tax rate, down to $16.72 or a 5 cent increase. So, the last scenario that I did, which is the first scenario the mayor proposed, was to get to zero on the city side. So we would need to do scenario, the first two scenarios. In addition to that, we would be looking at probably an additional two positions valued at $90,500 as well as eliminating the Liberty Festival and the Hillside Snowmobile Club's donation for $13,560. That totals $104,000, bringing the city sides down to $16.67, which is a 0% increase. The City Administrator wants to kind of balance it a different way and look at adding back the six filled positions. And the add-back would be $268,935 or provide an overall city-side budget increase of 13 cents. So that is the summary of the budget adjustments.
Okay, thank you, Heather. So, Madam Clerk, if you could, I can only see half of the participants because there's a screen up there. So if we can just help me keep an eye out on any questions.
Sure.
And then Heather, one clarification in the final scenario four. Does that include, tired of trying to move that up, but does that include the number three? So like the Liberty Festival, would that also be included in number four?
Yes.
Yes, the only thing that we're...
It includes everything except the six filled positions that would require laying people off.
Okay, thank you. So, you know, just one for public record, I asked that we look at several scenarios. And I'm not recommending any of these scenarios specifically, but I just felt it was important for the council to look at all possible options and, you know, we're struggling because we don't believe this is the time during this pandemic and the lack of revenue to insert any type of significant increase in property taxes because we also recognize that our constituents throughout the city and our residents are struggling financially right now. So I'm going to open this up for any thoughts or discussion from city councilors, any other scenarios they might like to see. So, I'm throwing it out to the council for discussion. Counselor LaJoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And number four, is there a possibility, and I guess Heather would be the best one to answer that, there be a possibility to go through the proposed budget that we have? And I know she went through it thoroughly. I've been with the city for a number of years and she's extremely well-versed in doing that. But is there an opportunity to go back and try to find, I know it's a lot of money, that $268,935 or a portion of that so that we can get back to the city's 0% increase?
Counselor, unfortunately, I have taken pretty much all of the big-ticket items. I may be able to nickel and dime a few more light items for probably $20,000. At this juncture, the council has a couple different choices. One would be provide additional fund balance carryforward, which is not something that I would necessarily recommend because we are at that 10.75% and we do not have any extra money built into this budget if something should go astray, particularly if we get a very bad winter next year. That's probably my biggest concern and I'm sure the Public Works Director. The only other thing that may impact that, and I cannot promise it at this point, is the Public Works Director and I are evaluating the utility funds to see if we might reduce and/or possibly eliminate the percentage of the water increase. If we did that, we would see approximately $100,000 savings from the increase in the fire hydrant rental component. That's about the only magic little rabbit I have left in my hat.
We do have one other possibility, though. The 15 cent increase that still shows for school is worth about $300,000, is that correct, Heather?
That's correct.
And the council, you know, we've asked the school to relook at their budget. I anticipate that they most probably will work really hard to get to that zero increase point. But that would provide that to, you know, over that $268,000. And I just, I want to mention this real quick. Even though we're making significant cuts in this city, there is still a need for, you know, some of the major festivals that we have. We have to show that we're a city that still has some life. So I would argue against removing funding for the Liberty Festival. But just, you know, we still have to have the resemblance of being the second largest city in the state. So that's all I have on that. And then I believe the school could come up with that 15%. Worst-case scenario, the council could make that decision when it comes to us for approval. Okay, Counselors, anything else? Counselor Patengill?
So just to kind of echo, you know, what Counselor LaJoy and...
So just to kind of echo, you know, what Councilor LeJoy and the mayor said, I feel really hard-pressed to approve anything over a 0% increase from the city. You know, I'd really look to our partners with the school committee to see what they can do to help us out with that. And then I would be really sad to see us not fund the Liberty Festival, but that's a big deal. And like the mayor said, we need to show that there are some signs of life after this, because it's all about the after and what we do to get back to our, you know, normalcy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Petten Gill. And I shared this with the councilors before, and I'll just, I'll say it again in public. There will be a recovery here, and if our council focuses on economic development, like we started the first two months of our terms, and we were actually seeing some things that were kind of exciting, those things are going to come back once we start the recovery mode of this pandemic. And I want to assure staff and the public that there is a recovery around the corner, and we have the right council, and hopefully the right mayor, to start that process and to get this city at a level of prosperity that we won't have to worry about this stuff every few years like we seem to be and have been for the last 10 years. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would concur with you, Counselor LeJoy and Counselor Petten Gill. I can't see anything other than a 0% or a 0 cent increase in the tax rate. I do believe that it's something that can be made up. You know, if we have to take the hard position, we can do that. I'm in hopes that, like you say, that the school department can help us out. This is not going to be an annual event. I hope it's a never-again event, but we have to come together. We have to bite the bullet this time and treat everybody equitably throughout this. So I just can't see any other way. I can't see an increase in taxes this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clement.
Mayor, I have a question for Heather. Heather, I'm wondering, can we combine scenarios?
Yes, you can do any combination that the council wishes to review.
Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To add in my thoughts, I'd also prefer not to use additional carryover funds. I completely agree about keeping the Liberty Festival and keeping, you know, the spirit of Lewiston going, of course. I do think it's fair to ask the school committee to reduce their budget to zero would be, it did take quite a hit on them. I know with the new superintendent, he had a lot of plans for a lot of changes in the school district, and I do at least want to acknowledge that, you know, reducing the budget is going to have an impact on that, so it is unfortunate. I certainly wouldn't ask them to go below a 0% increase. I just don't think we should do that to our school district. It's just not something I'd support. But I kind of like what Counselor Khalid was talking about, maybe combining different parts of the scenarios I could be, that's kind of what I'm looking at right now and going through my head. So just wanted to share those thoughts.
Counselor Ray, and then Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we look through, and, you know, this is obviously isn't a final decision, but my initial thought is scenario four with Ed's recommendation, we have added six folks to the city of Lewiston payroll, and those are real people with real families who will also be in trouble if we roll back those positions. So I'm having a hard time resolving in my head, and I do look forward to the school committee's discussion about what is possible for them as well, knowing that they are a much larger employer, and the numbers will just work out differently there. So I'm hopeful that we can come to some sort of compromise there. In the same breath, I would prefer a 0% or a 0 increase from what we can do and what we're working on now. So I want it both ways, and I know we can't have that, and so going to have to make a hard decision, but I do want to seriously think about what that looks like.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, there's no easy answer to this. This is really difficult, and I just find myself, you know, looking over this and over this, and the one thing that just keeps coming to my mind is that, I think when we think about the spirit of Lewiston and we think about how that ties into economic development, it's huge. So, you know, as I begin to think about the future and what's happened already in the city and what's going to continue to happen, I just, that's really on my mind, those two things. I support a 0% increase, absolutely. I'm looking at scenario number four most favorably. I agree with Counselor Jensen in that while I think we do have the need to go back to the school committee, I'm hoping we can find some kind of a compromise to get to a place that it'll feel more equitable. But at this point, you know, really looking at how we can tweak scenario four in the best way that we can.
Okay, and you recognize scenario four has a tax increase.
It does, so that's why I kind of brought in the whole compromise with the school department potentially.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Clement has his hand raised.
Counselor Clement, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to clarify my position, I, when I spoke, I hope it wasn't taken that I want to eliminate those six filled positions. I'd like to be able to keep them, and I'm in hopes that, as you said, the 15 cent increase on the school side shown in that scenario could possibly save those positions, if it's enacted by them or by the council, whichever way. I also would hate to see us have to lay anybody off. It may be, you know, a very short-term thing, it may be a long-term thing, but 15 cents can make up the difference. I would like to think that they can find it in their heart to help us out.
But it won't in that scenario four, even if the school dropped the 15, then there would still be a 13 cent increase on the city side. Is that correct, Ed?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. To get to zero under the scenario everybody's talked about, the 15 cent for the school department would be about a $300,000 cut. To absorb our 13%, they would need to do about a $569,000 cut.
So in scenario four's situation, if the school dropped the 15, and then we had to go after that 13 cent to reduce it, that would be 200, how much would that be?
$269,000.
Okay, all right. Which that's pretty significant. I think that would be very challenging to do without positions involved. Would you agree?
Yes.
I think that's something, yeah, certainly we can't do it without positions. I can't speak for the school department.
Okay, thank you. Councilors, questions or further direction for the city administrator?
I have a question slash a suggestion. I'm wondering, so we need to get to, because I don't, I definitely, with my colleagues, that I don't want any increase at all, so figuring out a way to get to 0%. And I'm looking at scenario two, combining it with, but, and then, but it says that it eliminates four positions. I'm wondering if we can keep those four positions and look into scenario three.
I don't know. Mr. Mayor, if I could, Counselor Khalid, this is a continuing scenario. So to get to zero, we start with scenario one, and then have to add scenario two, and then have to add scenario three. We need all three scenarios to get to zero. It's not just saying scenario three and then jumping down to scenario, let's say, one. I need all three of those numbers, those totals, to get to zero. It's a cumulative effect.
So we're not going to get to budget tonight. I don't want councilors to think that there's an expectation you're making a decision tonight. I think this is just the realization check-in that these scenarios bring to all of us. And, you know, to be quite honest, it brings it to our staff, which is, it's, you know, I believe in public discussions, but when you're having these type of discussions, the uneasiness that it brings to staff, it's just, it's really too bad that we have to do that and we have to have these discussions. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to come back to this. A question I thought of is when we've been in scenarios like this before, could staff speak to the number of eliminated positions, I believe in 2010 and 2011?
Ed.
The, yes, the reductions that we made in 2011's budget were in the range of 24, 25 That was followed two years later by another, I think, five positions. So over that period of time, we cut about 30 positions from the city's overall staff. Since then, we have put some of those positions back. A lot of them have been in public safety, but we have not really, you know, totally put everybody, all of those positions back, so particularly in public works. So here, we would talk, we would be talking about initially the 12 vacant positions plus up to six more, so we'd be in the 18 position range, which is a little bit shy of where we were in 2011, only because we're using fund balance to make up a big chunk of the difference. If we had to come up with that 1.3 million, you could double, double-plus the number of positions that would have to be eliminated. That's why Heather and I, against our basic principles, are recommending fund balance be used this year. Otherwise, I don't know that we could take that kind of a reduction and continue to provide reasonable level of service to the public. And we can also hope that this is a huge, obviously, one-time slam into our budget and into the economy that will improve more rapidly than we did coming out of the last recession.
And if you have it handy or could provide it to us at some point, so it looks like revenues are going to be cut about 12%, is that comparable to 2011 as well?
It generally is. It's in the same line as the recession. Recession's impact really was spread over a number of years, so it was more like a two- or three-year period to get the impact. Autoexize is a good example. People stopped buying cars, but the fleet ages over time and the amount of revenue drops over time. So it's a comparable adjustment, all occurring pretty much within one year.
Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ray. Any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Jalinas.
So when we talk about, you know, the 12% decrease in revenues or just the reduction of 1.6 million in revenue, that's just a projection based on what happened in those years. I was just trying to understand where those numbers came from, and I think you answered that, but I just wanted to make sure, because I guess we don't really know how long this is going to go on. So is that just a, based on what happened?
Ed.
That's correct. We basically said, if we basically said if we have to come up with an estimate, what should we base that estimate on? The only thing that we could come up with that was similar was the impact of the recession, recognizing that it's different. And of course, we did, beyond just the straight adjustment, and that period was about a 12% drop, we looked at individual line items, because some costs, some revenues are going to come in anyway. You know, if we have a contract for a cell tower with a cell company, they're going to pay their full amount. So we made those kind of adjustments, but we're in that same ballpark. What's our confidence level in those adjustments? It's not terribly high. You know, we're all hoping that we massively overestimated the negative impact. I, my suspicion is that if anything, we may be a little bit too optimistic, which is why we want to preserve more of our fund balance. We don't want to use all of our fund balance, because we want to have some cushion should things become worse. But it is a rough estimate, and there's no guarantee as to what will actually happen.
Thank you. That was really what I was getting at, was the confidence level, so I appreciate your response.
Thank you. Ed or Heather, would we expect any issues with our bond rating going that low with the fund balance?
No, because, as I mentioned, typically, we hover right around that 10% mark, so that will keep the bond rating at least at the current level. There are a few things that the bond rating will look at, is to see how we address the revenue shortfall, and whether we did a one-time injection, like for example, using $3 million worth of fund balance that we cannot replace. The other thing that they would look at is, did we make any kind of permanent changes that have, that cross several fiscal years in order to, if there is a sustained decrease in the economy, that allows us to weather that storm a little bit better.
So the actions that we're looking at would actually, they would look favorably upon that?
They would be neutral on that, yes.
All right, thank you. So councilors, we have a lot to think about. Any other questions or suggestions? And I know that we're absorbing a lot tonight, so I just would encourage every single counselor, tomorrow you wake up, you think of something, you have a question, you know, reach out to Ed or Heather. And then, so my suggestion is if we don't have any other comments or suggestions, we bring it back to the table on Tuesday, and hopefully we'll be able to provide the guidance that administration needs to. I mean, I think the guidance has been a zero tax increase, so I think Ed and his staff will be talking about that over the next few business days. All right. Anything else, councilors? Anything else from staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ray, yes.
Can you just remind us of the public comment email for the members of the public watching who might want to send along their thoughts about our discussion?
So it's a work, so this is a workshop, so do we-
I just mean in terms of the budget discussion in general.
Okay. So Kathy, could you go over all the ways the public can share public comments with the council or ask questions?
Sure. So we've established a dedicated new email address, and it's publiccomments, with the S on the end, publiccomments@louisinemaine, all spelled out, lewisinemaine.gov for government. So publiccomments@louisinemaine.gov. Folks can also call City Hall. City Hall is staffed on a rotating basis with folks, so they can call 513-3000 and leave a message, I guess, with the administration- a message, I guess, with the administration staff or with the finance department for clarification. Ed might have some other thoughts on that. And of course, they can send a letter in if they're interested to 27 Pine Street in Lewiston.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything, anything else from councillors? Okay, staff? All right. Do we need a motion to end the workshop? No, right? No, okay, thank you. All right, all right, thank you, councillors. Reach out to staff if we need anything, and thank you, Ed, Dennis and Heather. I know this has been a long week for you folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Lee?
Tuesday at 6 o'clock again?
Kathy?
Yes, Tuesday at 6:00 PM. So, 6:00 PM on Tuesday is a budget workshop session, and 7:00 PM is a regular city council meeting, and it will be in the same format.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Jalinas?
And then another meeting, Kathy, on Thursday at 6:00?
I believe so. Ed and Heather, if they can confirm that?
At this juncture, I would think so.
Right, I would assume, unless we come up with the final decision on the budget. But I think, and, yeah, we may have an answer from the school committee by the end of next week, so odds are yes, two meetings next week.
Very good.
All right. All right, thank you all.
Thank you all.